Believe it or not, we didn't have any. No, we didn't go to. We started working for.
Where were you?
We were in London.
London.
London proper. Yeah.
How long?
About ten days in London and one night in Paris. Okay, not even a full night. Like we got there in time for dinner and had to run. So, but it was, London is always amazing.
World-class city.
Okay, we have everybody.
Seed of the empire.
We went to Bath, of course, which is super cool.
No, seven, is Wednesday at seven, six or seven? Seven.
Seven.
Okay. Myland's not, so let me go ahead and give you that one so I don't get confused. And also Maria's not going to be here, right? Okay.
Erica, who wants to sign up?
Oh.
Which one? Yeah, yeah.
So strange without the barriers now, I feel like.
Maria, back to normal.
It's odd when normal starts feeling strange.
Normal starts feeling strange, yes. Something to be said for that, yeah.
Let me just wait for this gentleman to sign in for public forum and then we'll get started.
Yep.
Mingus, okay, thank you Erica, are we all, everyone's on?
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Best?
Present.
Councilman Behad?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you, I'll stand please for the invocation by Councilman Victor Vasquez.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the residents of this city. And continue to remind us that all that we do here tonight, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of our community. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Let's all join in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, March twenty eighth. Nice to see everyone here. We're going to move right to awards and presentations, and this is a very special meeting for our city. We're very, very honored to have here tonight Representative, our State Representative Brian Avila and State Representative Alex Rizzo, and also from Senator Manny Diaz's office Judith Ruiz is here representing his office. So we are really, really honored to have our state. Representative Avila, did you want to talk about the post, what is it, the post session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Well, first and foremost, just want to thank you Mayor, the City Manager, the council members, and this community for all of your support, certainly throughout the, throughout the number of years that I've served in, you know, in the Florida House of Representatives. As you very well know, this is my last session, and I wanted to make sure certainly that I went out with a bang, so to speak, and really, you know, made sure that I left everything in place, you know, with various projects for the city. You know, essentially making sure that I went out, you know, making sure that I kept and upheld my promise to deliver for this community. So for me, it was, it was an important session, you know, I think more so than any other. It was certainly one that was extremely busy because of my responsibilities as the Healthcare Appropriations Chairman, which essentially represents, you know, me overseeing about forty-six percent of the state budget in terms of a, you know, monetary representation of that, that's equivalent to forty-five billion dollars. So that was what I was tasked with in terms of my responsibilities as serving as the Chair of the Healthcare Appropriations Subcommittee in the Florida House of Representatives. And within that, obviously, we know last session, we had several successes from, from East Drive as well as Royal Pointiana. And before that, we also had a major success, certainly with the funding of and providing funding for the Senior Center, which is absolutely spectacular, and our seniors absolutely love, and that was obviously a team effort between the city, our County Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, as well as myself and Senator Manny Diaz. So, you know, we, we've had, we've had a good run, we've certainly made sure, you know, to provide, you know, all the appropriations possible for the city. And this term, this session was, was no different. This session, we, I think, I'm not, I'd have to verify this, but I think it was record funding
Yes.
for the city of Miami Springs, and just to, you know, so that the, so that the public knows, knows the extent of that. So for the, I'll start first with the City of Miami Springs Senior Center, the Supplemental Meals and Services, which is under my, my purview as the Healthcare Appropriations Chairman. And under that purview, I made sure to increase the funding up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the Miami Springs South Drive Road and Stormwater Improvements, that's a two million dollar project that is in the state budget right now. With Miami Springs Hook Square Pump House Replacement, that's another seven hundred and fifty thousand. And lastly, for the Miami Springs Erosion Control and Stabilization of Drainage, that's another two million dollars. So in terms of projects, obviously historic funding, and that took a lot of work, you know, a lot of teamwork, certainly from, you know, with myself and Senator Diaz, as well as Representative Rizzo. And it was really, you know, it was, it was a session where you had to be extremely active to make sure that those fundings, that those funds were secured, as, you know, obviously every, every single municipality, every representative, you know, is fighting tooth and nail for those, for those dollars. So, you know, we made sure to work together to secure those funds, and as I mentioned before, you know, hopefully, I think that, you know, I've placed numerous calls to the Governor's Office, I know that the city as well, in order to make sure that the Governor, you know, either, you know, looks another way, you know, has a cramp in his wrist, drops the pen, you know, whatever the case may be, so that those, those funds can be, can be here and stay with this community. That really is just, I would say it's, it's unique and absolutely stunning and beautiful, and beyond family-friendly. So those are, those are some of the accomplishments from a, an appropriation standpoint for the city. I did want to provide sort of an overall view of, of the, of the state budget. And so our, our current state budget right now is a hundred and twelve point one billion dollars. We actually have about eight point nine billion dollars in reserve. We have the highest bond rating that a state could possibly have in the Union, which obviously has attracted a lot of folks from other states that are, one, seeking certainly a better economic opportunity, but also a lot of the benefits that come with sort of the governance of the state. You know, so that's eight point nine billion dollars in reserves, which is absolutely unheard of when you think about it from a national perspective and other states that are comparable. We also have, we establish a five hundred million dollar emergency preparedness and response fund. And this is obviously dedicated to ensuring that if we have hurricanes, another pandemic, whatever the case may be, any natural disaster, Florida is prepared to, obviously, to respond when called upon. And lastly, we, from a reserve component, we also established a one billion dollar fund, which is to tackle inflation. Certainly, we've seen record highs in inflation, we're at about a forty, forty-year historic level in terms of inflation, and a lot of families, you know, certainly in our community and the surrounding communities are having a really tough time. You know, and that's, that goes for every single, every single thing, whether it's groceries, whether it's gasoline, whether it's diapers, you, you name it. Everything has gone up, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that we, we set up a fund that was dedicated to offset, you know, those, those dramatic increases to provide some relief to our residents. So, and just briefly, I'll touch on a couple of major items in each section, whether it's agriculture, healthcare, education. Just talk, talk about from a budgetary standpoint, the dedication, the dollars that have been dedicated to those specific areas that I think pertain in some way, shape, or form to the city, which the city can certainly follow up with a lot of these departments to see if maybe you would have access to some of these funds. So with agriculture and natural resources, we have, we've dedicated two point three billion dollars for our natural springs, canals, and water, water improvement, water quality improvement projects. So that's certainly something that, you know, I think the city should look into in terms of seeing if you're eligible for any of those extra funds moving forward. From a healthcare perspective, here we had, in terms of child welfare, we increased the amount to two hundred and fifty-eight point two million dollars, which is a historic investment in terms of from a child welfare perspective. We want to make sure that our children really have all the resources necessary, and the system itself has everything necessary in order to obviously provide, provide a home and provide services to those children that really need it. Also, you know, with, with the pandemic, we've seen a rise in, in mental health, right, and, and substance abuse. And that goes from, from the very start of COVID to, to present day. And, you know, we made a commitment from last year, which was about two hundred and fifty million dollars going to mental health and substance abuse. And we continued that into this, into this session with a two hundred and sixty million dollar investment into mental health and substance abuse. So over a two-year span, you're talking about more than half a million, sorry, more than half a billion dollars to tackle, you know, those, those issues pertaining to substance abuse and mental health. From a pre-K twelve, twelve education standpoint, we actually invested twenty-eight point three billion dollars into what, what we know as the FEFP. For those not familiar with the FEFP, that is the Florida Education Finance Program. So we have raised the per student funding to a record of eight thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. So that is a historic, a historic amount in terms of FEFP funding for our students, and something that certainly continues our commitment to make, to make the state of Florida number one in the nation. Right now, overall, in terms of education, we're number three in the entire Union according to U.S. News and World Report. So, you know, we're, we're in the top three, but we want to make sure we're number one, and certainly, these investments will help us get there. With regards to higher education, and I'm sure, I don't know if the chief is here, but this is something certainly that I think the Police Department, you know, will, will, should look into. So we made an investment of six million dollars to create the Law Enforcement Academy Scholarship Program and the Out-of-State Law Enforcement Officer Equivalency and Licensing Program. And this is meant to boost recruitment in terms of our law enforcement officers. It is certainly meant to draw police officers that are serving in other states that are looking to move to Florida to make it easier for them to transition and come to the state of Florida and serve our communities. So I think that that is a, certainly a program that is going to be very impactful and very helpful to all of our communities. And lastly, with, with tourism and with infrastructure and tourism, so we increased the funding for the Transportation Work Program. So it's commonly known as the F dot work program, the five-year work program. So we increased it, and now it's at eleven point one billion dollars. And again, we're trying to make sure that we continue to maintain that number one slot in the entire Union for infrastructure. Right now, the state of Florida is number one out of all the states in terms of infrastructure. So making these investments are going to continue to make us and help us keep up with demand, and certainly to continue to maintain us in that top slot. You know, we're seeing right now just, just under a thousand people moving to the state of Florida every day. Right, so that demand for, you know, the extended roadways, for, you know, street widening, for creating more transportation solutions, that's only going to continue with more and more people coming to the state of Florida. So rather than, you know, take a reactive approach, we're taking a proactive approach, and we're making these events, these investments on the front end so that we can make sure that, you know, once, obviously, we get, we see even more than what we're seeing right now in terms of people leaving, leaving their, their states and coming here, we're prepared for that. So again, we're number one in this, in the entire Union in terms of infrastructure, and investments like this will help us, keep us there. We also added twenty million dollars for law enforcement recruit, for the law enforcement recruitment bonus program, and this ties into those other two programs that I mentioned previously. This is meant to provide upwards of a thousand dollar bonus to those, those law enforcement officers that are currently serving in other states and, you know, are looking to move to the state of Florida. This is something that will be in addition to those other programs to get them here to serve our, our residents in our, in our respective communities. And lastly, just wanted to mention that we have, we have made an investment of fifty-nine point one million dollars for the Department of State Cultural Grant. You know, so all of those historical museums, you know, there's, there's, there's grant money that is out there from the Department of State that we could, we could tap into, that the city could tap into, certainly for any sort of renovations or any sort of expansion or additions to the current museum. So that's just a brief run-through of those budget highlights. Lastly, I just want to mention that we do have a tax package that we passed, and that tax package, that tax cut package is over a billion dollars, which is the most, the most robust tax package that we've ever passed in the state of Florida. And it provides a fourteen-day back-to-school tax holiday so that, you know, the kids and the children and the students, they can go and obviously get their books and it be, you know, tax-free, and certainly they can get the materials that they need in order to be successful in the classroom and be prepared. There's also a tool-time sales tax holiday. So this is a seven-day tax holiday for, you know, to encourage certainly Floridians to, you know, make, make, make renovations to their homes, encourage them to strengthen and harden their homes, certainly in the areas that get impacted with the hurricanes. So this is more of a preemptive measure to get them, you know, sort of thinking in that mindset of what they can do, certainly to make their homes stronger and more resilient. Then we have the Disaster Preparedness Sales Tax Holiday, and this ties in with the Tool Time Sales Tax. Again, this is, this is for your generators, this is for your batteries, your flashlights, water, anything and everything that you would need for a natural disaster. So that ties into that Tool Time Sales Tax Holiday. And lastly, we have a sales tax holiday that is, we deem it the, the Freedom Week. And this is a more so a seven-day recreational sales tax holiday, certainly to encourage more family events, you know, at obviously a discounted rate without those taxes being put on top. You know, just to encourage certainly families getting together, whether it's in the outdoors or whether it's going to, you know, aquariums or aquariums or whatever the case may be, but really to get them to spend time together, and obviously without having to pay taxes for doing that.
Thanks.
So again, this is, it was, it was a very, you know, it was a very complex session from the standpoint of, you know, we made, we had to prioritize, we had to make strategic investments to make sure that Florida was, you know, continues to be on a path to success. And, you know, our previous years and the decisions that we've made are obviously paying off if more and more people are moving to the state of Florida. So we wanted to make sure again that we did our part, made, you know, smart decisions, and made sure that we made the right investments and made sure that we stay at the top of the list on everything that you could possibly be on top of, right? So I mentioned number one in infrastructure, we're number three overall in education, we're number one in higher education. We are number two in terms of return on investments. So if somebody wants to set up a business, chances are in the state of Florida, you will, you will get a return on your investment. If you buy a property in the state of Florida, chances are you will make a, a return on your investment. You know, so those are, those are all key categories that we look at. Obviously, our bond rating is important to all of that from, from our standpoint, making sure that we have more than, more than what's even really necessary, but, you know, making sure that we're prepared for anything and everything with, with a good balance in terms of our reserves, and making sure certainly that we continue, you know, to, to focus on infrastructure because we have a lot of people coming to the state of Florida. We don't want to see bottlenecks in every single community, we want to make sure that there's smart decisions being made, and we want to make sure that those transportation solutions come online as soon as possible. So, I mean, that's, that's really it from a, from a legislative perspective. You know, I would tell you, and I would tell those in the audience and those viewing, we are extremely fortunate. We are extremely blessed to live in the state of Florida. We're extremely fortunate, certainly to, you know, to, to be moving forward. And certainly there is, you know, that light is right there, you know, we just have to continue to, to move towards it. We have to continue to make sure that we make the right investments, and, you know, that economic growth will continue in our state. Right now, we're the fifteenth largest economy in the world. So the state of Florida is the fifteenth largest economy in the entire world, right? When you, when you put it into that perspective, you realize how great the state of Florida really is. You know, we are just over a trillion dollars in terms of GDP, and there is absolutely no slowing down in that category. So, you know, I look forward to certainly continuing to, to, to work with all of you as a, as a resident on DeSoto, and, and in whatever capacity moving forward I'm in. I also wanted to take this opportunity to bring Representative Alex Rizzo, who again was, was very helpful this session in making sure that a lot of funds, you know, came to Northwest Miami Dade. I could tell you from, from the, from the projects that I sponsored that I was really involved in, it was about over fifty-eight million dollars that we were able to bring back to Northwest Miami Dade County, which is absolutely unheard of. I think Representative Rizzo tacked on another, you know, thirty or so. You know, so you're talking about, you know, well over $80 million coming to Northwest Miami Dade, which again is is absolutely unheard of. But that that's, that's what gets accomplished when when you work as a team and certainly, you know, my office, Representative Rizzo's office, Senator Manny Diaz's office, Representative Tom Fabrizio, Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart's office, it really takes a village. And certainly, we were able to to make sure that our residents had the best of the best and continue to see that representation, you know, translate into more funding for critical projects in our communities. So with that, just wanted to say thank you so much for for everything. For me, it's, it's, it's truly an honor and a privilege to be here. I thank each and every one of you for your service to our city and to our community. All of you are exceptional, and you know that, you know, I, I, I love each and every one of you and and love seeing you at all the community events and look forward to continuing to do that. With that, just wanted to see if Representative Rizzo had a couple of words.
Mayor Vice Mayor, council members and everyone else on the dais. Hi, hello. I am Alex Rizzo. I'm representing District 110 currently. We had a redistricting year after the census, two years after, we kind of shift a little bit, and the districts have moved a little bit. And so Speaker Rotam Avila, you know, the moose, as we call him, because he charges right in. He asked, you know, we have been talking about it and and through some hard decision-making, I have decided to file and run for the new District 112, of which Miami Springs is totally encompassed. And so this will take the majority of Hialeah, it will take all of Miami Springs, all of Virginia Gardens, and a little portion of Miami down to 836. So basically, it's from about 37th Avenue on the East to about, well, to the Palmetto, not including any part of Medley, and from, if you're from Hialeah, as I am, 53rd Street in Hialeah, down to 836. And so I look forward to campaigning hard, getting to know every single one of you. Nothing is is given. God willing, I will represent you coming in November. And and I've just got to tell you, it's, it's a real honor to do so. And one of the things that I that I really want to say is that we have a warrior here with us in Representative Avila. And Representative Avila tackles big, tough issues, whether they be fiduciary, whether they be policy. And one of the things that 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 I love about serving with him and with Senator Manny Diaz, and we've been friends for years before we started and embarked on these careers in politics, is that we truly feel that we are representatives of our communities. And you have that word from me, just like, you know, you have in in Representative Avila. We truly love what we do. And we bring that every day, we bring that 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 zeal to represent our communities in anything that we do. I, a little bit about me, I was raised in Hialeah, still live there. The River Cities is something that that, you know, I grew up with. I still do a lot of business here in Miami Springs. I have owned property here in Miami Springs. I know and have some ties here to the folks in Miami Springs. And and like I said, it would be an honor for me to represent you in Tallahassee, which is why I have filed for the new newly formed seat of 112. Again, I want to thank Representative Avila. I really, I know you all know, but just to be on the record, him serving in leadership in Tallahassee and being the kind of man that he is, it is an honor to serve with him. And and I certainly hope that we will have the opportunity to continue to serve in some capacity, be that at the state and at a local level. And even if we're not elected, I know that Representative Avila and myself will still continue to be there for everyone that we do. This, and just on a final note, the districts are very large. There's 120 of us that serve in the House of Representatives, and it's a blessing to do so. But because of Florida's size and its 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 growth rate over the last 10 years, we've grown, I currently represent about, I think it's 150,000 people. Right now, our districts are going to average about 187,000 people. So you can imagine, that's, that's quite large. And we're so compact, I serve with representatives, we both serve with representatives that actually have 10, 11 counties that they cover. So you can imagine, we are concentrated, we're focused, and and I love where we live. I love the fact that Miami Springs is a little diamond, and people love to be here. And I guarantee you that it will, if if I'm elected, that I will bring that same duty and honor to try to respect that, that sense of home, that sense of of community that you all bring every single day and that Representative Avila has brought to this job every single day. So thank you very much. And just thank you and thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, I think without further ado, I'd like to ask for a standing ovation.
For our representative.
Representative Brian Avila and everything he has done for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative Rizzo, for being here and and for taking the time to to come and let us get to know you. And we're, we're very appreciative of all the work that you've done at the state Capitol on behalf of our community and the communities around us. And Representative Avila, I know this is, you're ending your term now, but you will still serve us as an elected official. One way or another, you will always be, I can see it for years and years and years that you're serving us as elected official is is always going to be something that we can count on. I just want to say, the years that I've been on the council, what Representative Rizzo said about you, your tenacity, your dedication to tackle issues that for our small city, issues that were really, really important for our small city and and, you know, and you just went right to the very front. And I'll say with the bed tax, that was extraordinary that we got so far, an issue that for years and years and years hadn't gotten anywhere. And you and Senator Diaz were able to get it to the House Senate floor at the very last minute. I know at the very last minute, it didn't go through, but this was like 11:00 PM, midnight or something. And that was just, I was in awe of the work that it took for you and Senator Diaz to do that for us. And we're extremely grateful for that. And the, my goodness, the appropriations this year, it's, there's such needed projects. And for a small city like us, it's so hard to get these things funded. And they're so, they're so important to us. We're right in the center of Miami Dade County and so impacted by, you know, the larger cities around us and Miami International Airport and just all, everything that's going on around us and these projects for flooding and road improvement and resiliency and and for our seniors are so, so, so important to our community. And the amount that you were able to secure for us this year, you and Senator Diaz, just, I'm in awe of it and so appreciative. Our community is so very, very appreciative. And and like you said, there's a pie that everyone in the state of Florida wants. And for you to be able to, for our state representatives to be able to secure this for us is amazing. The other thing I just wanted to mention before I know everyone wants to speak is for the state of Florida, this great state, there is no other state. When I meet people from other places, and I go, I can understand, maybe you don't want to live in Miami Dade County, but why wouldn't you live in Florida? Like, it just doesn't make sense to me, you know? It's like, this great state and the work that you're doing, that both of you and Senator Diaz are doing in Tallahassee on behalf of the whole state of, you know, we are one big community, one state. And the work that you do, planning ahead of thinking of the infrastructure that we need, the environmental issues, the healthcare, this mental health even, is phenomenal and very, very appreciative. All of us are from our community. So thank you. I wanted to just give one more round of applause for.
First of all, thank you, Representative Senator Diaz, Representative Rizzo, having up, haven't had the opportunity to meet you. Look forward to meeting you and talking more for all that you've done for the city of Miami Springs. It's a special place. As you've said, I moved here 12 years ago, and it took me a long time to get here. And full disclosure, I used to live in Hialeah, and I just couldn't afford a house in Hialeah at that moment. But but I love living in Hialeah. And but I want to, just on a personal note, because I've known Representative Avila now for about a year, right? And I've visited him at his home. In addition to all the things that you said, Representative Rizzo, did not know they called them moose. I, you know, I, I, but I can, I can, I can see that. All the other things that Representative Avila is, and in politics, this is, this is often said, is that Representative Avila, Brian, is an honest man and a man of integrity. And I think that's important to point that out because sometimes folks get a bad name, a bad rap, because we disagree about a budget item or the other. Let's not lose that humanity that we need in politics, no matter what side of the aisle you're sitting. At the end of the day, we're all Americans. And we're all Miami Springers, right? You know, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. We, at the end of the day, you know, when I served in the military, I used to remind folks that when the enemy was shooting at Americans, they weren't asking what political party or what color we were, you know, that that and that's, that's really who we are. And that's what I mean by integrity, right? And so, sir, as you set sail to New Horizons, Brian, may the wind be always at the back of your sail. Good luck to you, brother.
Sure. Say anything. I'll give it a shot. Vice Mayor. Hi, Brian. So I've gotten to know Brian in the last year. And let me tell you, you're humble and fierce. And I think that that those qualities are are huge for me. You served as a role model for me. You might not have known it, but I've been watching you and I've been learning. And I know I serve at a local level, but I'm looking at the big people up there in Tallahassee, and I'm learning from our do's and don'ts. And I can honestly say, looking at you, I haven't, I haven't, observing you, I haven't really found a do not to do. Everything has been, I mean, yeah, I mean, you're a moose, like you literally just go in and and I think your heart driving you with that energy is where you've been able to accomplish everything. And I think that God knowing where your heart is, you see results because you're you're coming from a good place. So with that said, thank you for your support. And you've just set higher expectations for a new hoop to hit for the next comer. So I'm super excited that you've left it right there. So thank you for your service and definitely I would like to to continue to work with you and see you around more often in our hometown.
That's it?
Yes, sir. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to keep it short and sweet, but I'm a person who who believes a great deal in in servant leadership. And servant leadership is all about overcoming, you know, outside challenges and knowing that everything is in service of the community. And I think that you embody service, you you serve, you serve our country, you you serve as as a leader within the state body, which which is its own, its own behemoth task. And you serve this community. And we couldn't be prouder as a 49-year resident of the city of Miami Springs, couldn't be prouder of you and the work that you've done, and the work that you've done on our behalf. And we are indebted to you. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members. I mean, truly, it's
We got it.
It means a lot. It means a lot.
And he's Miami Springs, which is
I did want to say that, you know, a lot of, a lot of what I've been able to do, obviously, hasn't, it wouldn't be possible, certainly without that family support at home. You know, so I'm very grateful, certainly to my wife and to my family for for allowing me, you know, out of the, out of the year, most, most people don't know this, but out of the year, a, you know, state legislator basically is in Tallahassee five months out of the year, right? You know, that's, that's an extraordinary amount of time that you're away from home. Then you couple that certainly with my other, you know, with my my other profession, which is as a service member in the Florida National Guard. And I mean, just in April, I'm going to captain's career course for three weeks, right? So I'm going to be, you know, gone for 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 another amount of time. So, you know, a lot of that wouldn't be possible without that family support and without the community support. And, you know, I would say that certainly, for me, it's always about being in a team and having that ability to really maximize the potential of the team. So I will never be able to, you know, I will never say, nor will I ever be able to say, that, you know, I did this single-handedly because that's, that's not true, really, if it wasn't for, you know, my colleagues, if it wasn't for my staff, which today, I mean, today is Alicia's birthday, and she's here. So, you know, that, that, that's the dedication, you know, that really comes with with this team. You know, when I was activated for the COVID response mission with the Florida Army National Guard, you know, from March of 2020 until March of, sorry, until March of 2020 till December of 2020, it was, it was really my staff, you know, Alicia and Carolina that were literally responding to calls and making sure that, you know, all of the, all of, you know, all of the things that, whether it was an issue from a local level, state level, or a federal level, you know, Alicia and Carolina were, were making sure that it got, it got resolved for that resident. You know, and that's, again, that, that's, that's, that's really what this team is and what it's all about. We're extremely dedicated to our, to our district, to our community and to our residents. So thank you.
Representative, and yes, sir.
I just wanted to echo all these accolades that have been thrown up, Brian. But there are other things that Brian does for the city besides bringing money from Tallahassee. And one of the things I want to thank him personally for is for getting the Florida Health Department to set up a vaccine site in our aquatic center. That's number one. Number two, I don't even know how many food drives have been done in the city during this pandemic because of Brian. So
How many visits to our senior center?
Oh, that's, besides, I'm just trying to show how many things you do aside from bringing money from from Tallahassee. I mean, you're dedicated to the community, you help us. And I wanted to thank you personally for all of the work you've done on behalf of the residents of the city. And I you'll continue to do it in some capacity in the future. Thank you.
And I wanted to echo also with Alicia and Carolina that so often we're reaching out to you and you right away, look into whatever it is for the representative. I know, since I was first on the council, I didn't know Representative Avila until I became, came on the council. And from the very beginning, I would reach out to him and say, can we meet for coffee? And we would meet for coffee at Starbucks or at Bella Bakery and just talk about issues, things that, you know, that were of concern. It was the accessibility that was just phenomenal. Very, very accessible, engaged, and determined to do the best that you can for our community, no matter what obstacles are in the way. And Representative Rizzo, I know you are the same, and we're looking forward to a long, long relationship with you. And Alicia, thank you, and Carolina. Diaz, because again, we're so incredibly grateful to the work that Senator Diaz does for us in Tallahassee. Yes, sir?
Mayor, if I might, and I'm sorry, I was remiss of my duties. This is Ms. Carmen Chumingo and she is my district aide. And she took time out to come here tonight to meet all of you too. And she is as dedicated as all of us are. She's part of the team as well, and so, you know, she's going to be a very familiar face, you know, now and in the future, and God willing, after November.
I don't know if our residents realize how much it is that you depend on these relationships and on reaching out to your legislators and asking for things that your community needs and for them to really not just say, okay, yeah, yeah, we'll look at it, you know, and shove it aside, or really look at it and get right back to you and get, like William was saying with the vaccinations and all this. And that's definitely the relationship we've had with our state representative and state senator. So we're very grateful. And I wanted to, before, well, we need to take a photo together, but first I wanted to ask everyone to join me in a shout out. Happy birthday, Alicia, on the count of three. One, two, three. Happy birthday, Alicia! And out. If we could get a photo.
We also have a representative from Mayor Diaz's Ballard office.
Oh, hello. How are you? Do you want to say a few words? Okay. Thank you for being here. This is really an honor to have all of you here. And we also have a judge which we'll be speaking to soon too, so extraordinary meeting. So let's get together for Alicia. I mean, excuse me, Judith, did you want to say a few, something on behalf of Senator Diaz?
I'm sorry. I have new contacts and, well, it's a disaster today.
We know that feeling. We know the feeling.
I'm back to myself. Hi, I'm Judah Thruiz and I'm the chief of staff for Senator Diaz. And it's been a pleasure to work for him and see how he fights for all his communities. It is a pleasure to be working with the mayor. She's fantastic. And it's been a wonderful run so far. We're hopefully, with the new redistricting, we get another extra two years, right? So we should be seeing maybe six more years of fighting to bring money back. It's a pleasure also to work with Representative Avila. You don't know the weekends that he worked nights, it's been nine o'clock at night and he was still there trying to work it out, working with staff, calling the governor. And it's a non-stop. It's not an easy feat, long hours, very hard work, and your letter was wonderful and they loved your letter. So working together is what it's all about and I think we're all been, we're a family and the senator sincerely thanks you and hopefully we'll continue to be a family.
Please, please thank the senator on our behalf of our city. We are so, so grateful for everything. Let's take a photo.
Your glasses are beautiful.
Thank you. I'm like, I'm passing through right now. Nice to meet you, sir.
Wild hair today.
It's wild like yours.
Yeah, right?
Oh, boy.
William. William.
No, no, no.
William, why don't you take off your jacket? Take off your jacket.
Frankie says hi.
Do you want to do either?
Wow. Oh, there you go. Here. Okay, Rizzo, where do I go? Para allá, para aquí.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Over four. One, two, three.
And over.
And I just wanted to say that even though Representative Avila is termed out in Tallahassee as our state representative, we are very excited that he is going to run as our commissioner, for county commissioner. So he'll be even closer, even more accessible to us and our city will benefit greatly from having him in that position. We're looking forward to that very much. And that, and I'm sure your wife and children are too, that you'll be here in Miami Springs.
Brian, at least you don't have to go to Tallahassee for that, right?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Okay, let's go to the next agenda item. And if it's okay with the council, we're going to skip to item E, which is introduction of Judge Misha Darrow, who is recently appointed to county, as a county court judge in 2019, and you're running again. Welcome. Thank you for visiting Miami Springs.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman, thank you so much. And woman, thank you so much for having us here, for having me here today. It's such an honor and a pleasure to be here. And I have to give a special thank you to Councilman Walter Fayette, who I met recently at a League of Cities meeting. And we talked and he invited me to come visit. And I'm just grateful that he is a man of his word and actually followed up and extended the invitation. So I'm so grateful to you for that. But, you know, I am a county court judge. I was appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis in 2019. In fact, December of 2019, what is it, about nine days before Christmas? And my birthday is right before Christmas, so six days before my birthday. So it's funny because I actually, it's been a whirlwind because, you know, it's during the Christmas holidays, everybody, I was at the U.S. Attorney's Office at the time. Everybody's pretty much on Christmas break and I needed to basically resign the same day in order to get into office so that I could go to Judicial College. So we have Judicial College, which is just college for judges. And it's funny because in Judicial College, really the first phase is they teach you everything you should not, or they try to teach you what you should not do so that you do not get fired until, before phase two. Because in phase two, they try to teach you more substance and stuff. So all new judges go up to Orlando and they try to tell you, don't do this, don't do that. But I went to County Civil. My background, like I said, was at the U.S. Attorney's Office and I was at the Miami Bay State Attorney's Office before that. So I know, I knew all criminal, you know. It was a homicide prosecutor, public corruption prosecutor, white collar prosecutor. So all these crimes and crazy cases, I was very familiar with. So going into civil was a whole new world because I had not been involved in that yet. So, but it's okay because why? You have your neighbors, you have your colleagues, you have your friends, you can talk to about cases. Well, my week in Judicial College, we leave on a Friday and that Monday we come back and this coronavirus is spreading, so everyone goes home and we're working remotely. So that's how my career has started and how it's been going. But I've enjoyed it, it's been a great, well, I have no complaints about it, you know. I have always been involved in public service, you know, as I said, with the state attorney, the U.S. Attorneys, and now as a judge. And, you know, because I started right before the pandemic, you know, I didn't have the opportunity to get out and about as much as I would have liked to. So, you know, I've been taking advantage of this opportunity and thanks to wonderful people like Councilman Fayette, I've been able to now reach, branch out or whatnot. So I don't want to take up too much time, I just want to thank you all. I've thoroughly enjoyed the meeting, learning about the representatives and the work that's been done, and seeing the Boy Scout here too. How cool is that? You know, it's a cool place when the Boy Scouts are here.
They are our future leaders one day. I always say, one day we'll be in the audience and they're gonna be up here.
Yeah, they'll wheel it.
So loving, hoping some future judges too. Yeah. You want to be a judge? Great.
But yeah, so I'm very appreciative of this opportunity. Thank you all for your service. I know it can't be easy, trying to balance everything. So thank you for what you do and just thank you again for everything and I'm wishing everyone all the best.
Thank you so much for visiting us and good luck and for being a judge.
You guys were already up.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
We need to put it on wheels.
Yeah, it's heavy.
Okay, we're going to move up one other item on the agenda, if that's okay with the council. It's a request by Boy Scout Troop 334 by the Scout Master Jim Fulton.
Jim's not here, someone else.
Okay. Hi, come on up. Welcome. And welcome, scouts.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, we thank you once and again for inviting us to the city council meeting. We wanted to express our sincere thanks for the generous gift that you're extending to our troop this evening. As many as you know, the, as many of you in the council are aware, the mission of the Boy Scouts is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout oath and law. The program aims of scouting include character development, citizenship, personal fitness, and leadership skills. Among these values is a duty to country and a call for service to others in the community. The gift presented to our unit tonight will go towards helping offset the cost of attending summer camp for our youth. For many of our scouts, summer camp is a premier experience and the highlight of the year. It keeps the youth engaged and excited about the program. Some of the benefits of the summer camp include developing life skills needed to become successful adults. Camp allows our youth to disengage from technology and take a deeper appreciation for nature and the world around us. Camp provides an environment that is conducive to the social and emotional development of our youth. It allows our youth to take a deep dive into learning new skills. It promotes independence and leadership development. It helps to create memorable experiences and establish lasting friendships. Some of my fondest memories as a youth include the time I spent at summer camp as a scout. Being raised in an urban setting, where else would I have been able to go out on a multi-day backpacking trek, go rock rappelling, whitewater rafting, learn how to canoe, obtain wilderness survival skills, sleep under the stars, and take a deep dive into first aid. By supporting our local scouting program, your generosity is helping to invest in the future leaders of this community. For this, we give our sincerest thanks. Our troop is here to serve. Please do not hesitate to reach out to us for our help or cooperation.
Thank you. The Boy Scouts have done so many projects in our community. They're always available for service at so many events. But I just wanted to thank the parents, the scouting parents. I grew up in Girl Scouts. My parents were never involved, but I really benefited from all of the activities that you were mentioning, the camping and the outings. And it was really through the grace of the parents who were scout leaders, who, you know, gave of their time to have these, you know, to have a troop. So I'm very, very grateful to the work, the mentoring that you do for these young men and the opportunities that you provide for them. And thank you, thank you, scouts, for your service as Boy Scouts. Like I said, you're going to be the leaders in the future and we'll be in the audience watching you guys up here or on a, as a judge and a whole bunch of other very impressive futures that I see for all of you. But thank you to the parents who do the work. I know it's, it's hard. It's a lot of hours away from your family and things that you could do just with your family and you extend that opportunity for a lot of other boys. So very grateful and it makes our community so much stronger to have the Boy Scouts here. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Thank you.
Yes.
What a treat to have you here, Representative Agnew, to see service in action for our boys. Thank you.
And I would say that it's great for the scouts to see him here and for him to see the scouts. In addition to what you said, Mayor, as a scout father, parent, both Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, you guys are an important part of our community, as are the Girl Scouts. And, and as, you know, people use the word patriotism, either lightly or not enough in our, in our, in our state. But when, when we talk about scouting, we're talking about future leaders and the emphasis of the scouts on leadership. And that was my son's experience, my experience as a scout, and I'm sure Walter as well, that, that that leadership is built, that those skills are built. And now that my son is, you know, the National Order of the Arrow, which is the, like sort of the paternal, you know, group, I know that he's still very much involved. So, you know, if it pleases you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we support the scout's petition request.
I'll second that if you're calling for a vote.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor?
Have a great summer.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. Yes. I've spoken before about the resilience of the Boy Scouts in this town over the last number of years that I've sat up here. And it is, it is refreshing to see that the younger guys, and you see the mix of ages here. You know, you don't just see guys all the same age. You see, and this is, this is the resilience of what you guys have done, you and Jim Fulton and all the leaders. My wife was a Girl Scout leader for seven years too. And one of the criteria for being in that troop was the parents had to sign a form saying you will go camping for a weekend once a month, or else you're not joining this troop. And she did that for seven years and they had wonderful experiences and, and I'm certain all these guys do too. And it's just a great thing you guys do and thanks so much for it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to take a photo with the Boy Scouts and Representative Avila?
Your glasses are beautiful.
Thank you. I'm like, I'm passing through right now. Nice to meet you, sir.
Wild hair today.
It's wild like yours.
Yeah, right?
Oh, boy. William. William. No, no, no. William, why don't you take off your jacket? Take off your jacket. Frankie says hi. Do you want to do neither? Wow. Oh, there you go. People. Do you want me to? Okay, Rizzo, where do I go? Para allá, para aquí.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Over four. One, two, three. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. And I just wanted to say that even though Representative Avila is termed out in Tallahassee as our state representative, we are very excited that he is going to run as our commissioner for county commissioner. So he'll be even closer, even more accessible to us and our city will benefit greatly from having him in that position. We're looking forward to that very much. And that, and I'm sure your wife and children are too, that you'll be here in Miami Springs.
Brian, at least you don't have to go to Tallahassee for that, right?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Okay, let's go to the next agenda item. And if it's okay with the council, we're going to skip to item E, which is introduction of Judge Misha Darrow, who is recently appointed to county, as a county court judge in 2019, and you're running again. Welcome. Thank you for visiting Miami Springs.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman, thank you so much. And woman, thank you so much for having us here, for having me here today. It's such an honor and a pleasure to be here. And I have to give a special thank you to Councilman Walter Fayette, who I met recently at a League of Cities meeting. And we talked and he invited me to come visit. And I'm just grateful that he is a man of his word and actually followed up and extended the invitation. So I'm so grateful to you for that. But, you know, I am a county court judge. I was appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis in 2019. In fact, December of 2019, what is it, about nine days before Christmas? And my birthday is right before Christmas, so six days before my birthday. So it's funny because I actually, it's been a whirlwind because, you know, it's during the Christmas holidays, everybody, I was at the U.S. Attorney's Office at the time. Everybody's pretty much on Christmas break and I needed to basically resign the same day in order to get into office so that I could go to Judicial College. So we have Judicial College, which is just college for judges. And it's funny because in Judicial College, really the first phase is they teach you everything you should not, or they try to teach you what you should not do so that you do not get fired until, before phase two. Because in phase two, they try to teach you more substance and stuff. So all new judges go up to Orlando and they try to tell you, don't do this, don't do that. But I went to County Civil. My background, like I said, was at the U.S. Attorney's Office and I was at the Miami Bay State Attorney's Office before that. So I know, I knew all criminal, you know. It was a homicide prosecutor, public corruption prosecutor, white collar prosecutor. So all these crimes and crazy cases, I was very familiar with. So going into civil was a whole new world because I had not been involved in that yet. So, but it's okay because why? You have your neighbors, you have your colleagues, you have your friends, you can talk to about cases. Well, my week in Judicial College, we leave on a Friday and that Monday we come back and this coronavirus is spreading, so everyone goes home and we're working remotely. So that's how my career has started and how it's been going. But I've enjoyed it, it's been a great, well, I have no complaints about it, you know. I have, I've always been involved in public service, you know, as I said, with the state attorney, the U.S. Attorneys, and now as a judge. And, you know, because I started right before the pandemic, you know, I didn't have the opportunity to get out and about as much as I would have liked to. So, you know, I've been taking advantage of this opportunity and thanks to wonderful people like Councilman Fayette, I've been able to now reach, branch out or whatnot. So I don't want to take up too much time, I just want to thank you all. I've thoroughly enjoyed the meeting, learning about the representatives and the work that's been done, and seeing the Boy Scout here too. How cool is that? You know, it's a cool place when the Boy Scouts are here.
They are our future leaders one day. I always say, one day we'll be in the audience and they're gonna be up here.
They'll be up here.
Yeah. But yeah, so I'm very appreciative of this opportunity. Thank you all for your service.
Listen, I know the feeling.
Actually, we have some neighbors that are camping now, due to different conferences and stuff that they're going to. Two of them just came back this weekend from the bleeding and actually.
Six.
Thank you, guys.
Oh my gosh, she went in the pool this weekend. She went in the pool this weekend.
I love the outfit. I love it.
My little granita. Hi, Fabian.
Take care.
Are you gonna go by the women's?
Absolutely.
You think, uh, Alyssa, it's gonna be there? No. Because I have something to give her.
How are you?
I think her name is. Oh my God, I can't believe I forgot her name. It's Alyssa. Okay, don't worry.
It was a small tent.
I won. Yeah, I did the mail.
Where are they keeping their stuff at?
Well, they got it still out in the parking lot.
Okay. We're not having my own proclamation. Yes, but there's two that we're not doing. So hold on.
Where are they meeting? Where do they meet them at?
Last time.
We're not doing Milo.
Or Maria.
Yeah, they pulled it over there.
Stick your head in between the shoulders of them. Yeah, yeah.
Good, good.
Listen to your parents. You're on the right track.
They say breathe, breathe.
Take care, bud.
Representative, thank you again so much. We're very excited about the next chapter of your continued leadership for our community. County Commissioner. Thank you. Okay, so I think we have just one thing left under awards and presentations and that is the presentation to the Miami Springs Procurement Department for Public Procurement Month for the month of March 2022 for the delivery of goods and services for the city. And we have Suzel is back. It's so good to be here again. Come on up. Do we have a? Is that? Thank you. Suzel, we're gonna do this because we've been going up there so much. You come over here and stand here and we're gonna take a picture with you behind us. How's that?
Hi. We're so, just small. So. We read the proclamation by the mayor of the city of Miami Springs. Whereas public procurement professionals earn the public's trust by demonstrating initiative, dependability, and wise cause, cost-effective methods for making purchases and allocating public resources. And whereas public procurement professionals make important contributions to ensure the efficient use of taxpayer dollars by providing resourceful services while maintaining the highest ethical standards. And whereas public procurement professionals fulfill their many responsibilities in diverse settings, these hardworking individuals increase operational efficiency and effectiveness in the delivery of goods and services for the city of Miami Springs. And whereas the city of Miami Springs procurement professionals, through their combined procurement power, spend thousands of dollars every year and as a result have significant influence on economic conditions throughout the city. And whereas the city of Miami Springs, an active member of the Southeast Florida Chapter of the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, NIGP, and other associations around the nation, are holding activities and special events to further educate and inform the general public on the role of public procurement. I now therefore proclaim month of March 2022 as Public Procurement Month and Professional Buyers Day in the city of Miami Springs. And Suzel is our procurement officer in Miami Springs. We're thrilled that she's back with us. Thank you. And I thank Suzel so much.
I don't know if people realize how, how much our procurement officer does for just all the contracts have to go through her. And there's so many services throughout Miami Springs that we're depending on procurement services to negotiate the best price, to determine whether they're available. It's a very complex process. So there's a lot on the shoulder of our procurement officer and we're very grateful for the work that she does and that the department does. Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving right along to open forum. And we have registered to speak at open forum is George Santine. And I just want to mention, before we start public forum, I always like to say that this is an opportunity for someone to speak to the council and have all of our undivided attention. However, we don't respond. It's a one way of communication, literally where you talk to us and we listen.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Good evenings to council members. George Santine, longtime resident, twenty-three years. I'm here to speak about the Gateway Overly District and the Towns Center project that is under construction. There was a traffic study that was provided by the developer to our city for calculations on parking. And it called for seventy spots in the garage to be shared. In addition to the forty-seven spots that we gave them as a off-street parking for their study and calculations. According to the plans or how it's permitted, two out of the four stories of the garage will have seventy spaces. They're supposed to be shared, but they're gonna be gated and they're gonna be assigned to the tenants. So to me, it doesn't seem like they're gonna be shared. So if this is true or it holds to be true, I have a question for the city attorney. I know she can't answer me today, but I do have a question to the city attorney. Can we legally go back to the developer to assure that this doesn't happen, first of all? And second of all, if it does happen, can we, considering there's a misrepresentation to the city, because they said they're gonna do something and they're not doing it, can we go back to them and ask them for compensation for the concessions we made to them for parking? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Santine. Okay, next on the public forum is Mr. Dominguez.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to, you're giving me to be here. I was a former resident of Virginia for twenty-seven years. Unfortunately, made a mistake to move to Hialeah. Now, the issue that is bringing me here is because the situation that we recently had with the factory, noise factory. And according to what I read or that the people of Hialeah did not complain about that. I live five blocks away from where the factory is located. And that night, I, I couldn't get it anymore. I had to contact the media. I called the channel fifty-first, fifty-one. I called the assistants of the current mayor Bo and expressed my disappointment and complained about that. I really, what I wanna do here is to thank you for doing for us what nobody did in our city. We had no representation there and I'm more than grateful in behalf of the three hundred more persons that called that night. According to what the police dispatcher told me when I called late night that day, and they say that, oh, more than three hundred persons had called already. And so, well, that's enough. I had to do something else. And then I even called the metro. I, I didn't call God because that's insane. But, you know, I just want to thank you very much about what the actions that you're taking. I don't know the results. I wasn't here this weekend. I understand that they had an event. But my wife told me by phone that, that everything was quiet. I don't know if you already got some results. I understand that you can give me any answers and and I'm just more than glad to be received here and have the opportunity to express my personal feelings on behalf of the people of Hialeah that were sick and tired of that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to come to Miami Springs to tell us that too. Good. Okay, so let's move to approval of the council minutes for the March fourteenth regular meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move six A.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's see, we have no reports, no public hearings. We move to new business, agenda item eleven.
This is the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving the purchase of cloud hosting services from Red Track LLC doing business as Vermont Systems in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars over a three-year period, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, providing for authorization, and providing for an effective date. Because this is a waiver of competitive bid, it does require a four-fifths vote from council this evening. And for the record, I'll read the recommendation. To recommendation by recreation, the council waived the competitive bid process in the best interests of the city and allow the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Red Track LLC doing business as Vermont Systems, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars over the next three years for the purchase of software, hardware, and related iCloud services necessary to report, to support the Parks and Recreation Department's projects to implement comprehensive recreation management software platform as funds were budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget pursuant to section thirty-one eleven E six G of the city code.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve eleven A.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Resolution B, eleven B.
This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, establishing rates for collection of garbage, trash, and recycling for residential and commercial customers effective October first, twenty-twenty-two, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. In accordance with resolution two thousand nine dash thirty-four forty-eight, the administration requests approval of a four percent increase in sanitation recycling fees, which is the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two increase of four percent assessed by the county for disposal and recycling fees. During September of twenty-twenty-one, the city received notice from Miami Dade of solid waste management, which is attachment A, that their disposal and recycling fees will both increase by four percent effective October first, twenty-twenty-one. The CPI from Miami Dade is at five percent, but increases by the county are capped at four percent. We recommend the increase of four percent for next fiscal year in order to cover the increase in operating costs of the department. Since the city includes the annual sanitation charges on the property tax bill, it was too late to make any changes for the tax bills that were mailed out in October twenty-twenty-one. We are hereby requesting approval of the new fee, which will be included in the tax bill that will be mailed out in October of twenty-twenty-two. The current annual sanitation recycling fee is six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents. The new fee will be seven hundred and nine dollars and thirty-two cents. This increase represents two dollars and twenty-seven cents a month to the single-family residential customers. Multi-family dwellings will go from nineteen twenty-one per unit to nineteen ninety-eight per unit. Now provided a history of the prior increases for you. In accordance with paragraph C, at the annual cost of living adjustments in the rate chart approved under resolution two thousand nine dash thirty-four forty-eight by council, as well as an additional increase for operating costs, the administration requests approval to increase our sanitation rate from the current fifty-three ninety-two per month to fifty-six zero seven per month, and the recycling fee from two eighty-eight to three oh four per month, effective October first, twenty-twenty-two. If council approves this increase, we're passing the required resolution for your approval.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So William, then our rate increase is strictly because of the county's rate increase, correct?
Correct.
So it's, it's, we're just passing it along because they're, they went up.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair? Yes.
William, one question. Will this come back to us again at four percent? Or do you think, does this fluctuate?
It fluctuates every year.
Okay.
But like it says in the memo, they're capped at four. I know for a fact that the CPI, I mean, I looked at the CPI for February of this year. It's already up in nine, nine point two percent range.
Part of the inflation.
So I'm sure next year it's gonna be, the letter we get in October will probably be in the eight to nine percent range. But like it says there, they're capped at four. So we'll see what happens.
And no change to the level of service, obviously.
Correct.
All right. Motion to move the item, Mayor.
Okay, second. All right, discussion. I just wanted to mention, looking at the memo of the past years, the history, they've always been able to cap it at four percent, but they never have. This is the first year that it's gone the whole four percent. And I'm guessing this is a sign of things to come with inflation and the cost of everything going up and, and thankfully, it has to be capped at four percent because we may be seeing this for the next few years. Okay. Any more discussion?
No, ma'am.
The vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez? Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 11C.
Yes, this is a recommendation by recreation, the council approved an increase of $2,500 to the city's current open purchase order with the Village of Virginia Gardens to reimburse the village for the soccer referee fees relating to the shared soccer program for a total amount not to exceed $14,500. And I just want to make it clear that just this does not require, because there is no procurement involved in this, that it didn't require a four-fifths vote by council as previously advertised.
You just need a regular vote on it.
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve resolution 11.
Second.
Second, okay. Can we help with discussion or?
Discussion right after the motion, yes.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Um, for the council, they're requesting, I guess, because I wasn't able to clarify this earlier, the $2,500 to, I guess we have an agreement with Virginia Gardens. And I'm assuming because of the inflation and everything that's happened, they're requesting for us to fill in the gaps there, right? Based on, okay. So, it's an overall increase. But will this happen next year or how often?
We'll look at it during budget T's when we do the workshop.
Okay, understood, thank you.
And if you look at the memo requesting it, it says they've had difficulty in getting referees, which I know that's across the board. And so, the cost has gone up, but it's really important, I feel, for us to have these opportunities for recreation and for sports available here in our community. And the few weekends ago, when they had the soccer awards program at Virginia Gardens, it was just so much fun, so many families out and just a typical, typical Miami Springs, life in Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens snapshot. Okay, any other discussion? Call the vote, please. Oh, Erica stepped out one second. And that's, she stepped out because I asked her to step out for something, so.
I'll call her. Absolutely. You gotta remind me, though, who goes first?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, all right, Vice Mayor Bravo.
Yes.
Actually, why don't we do this by voice vote?
Okay.
We can just do a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Ayes carry it, anyone?
Perfect, motion carries.
Okay.
And we did have a first and a second on that.
Yes.
Yes, Vazquez and Bahet.
Perfect, 12A.
Okay, so 12A, this is a discussion. And I don't want to get too long into this because I could probably talk forever. So, if y'all get tired, just, you know, say enough already, like this. But I want to give a little background. Back in 2016, the state legislators passed a bill that prohibited municipalities from not allowing the use of plastic bags, plastic utensils, and polystyrene, which is styrofoam. So, any or any city, and you know, this happens all the time to us with preemptions, any city that did not have already an ordinance regulating or I don't want to say prohibit, minimizing the use of these products, could not implement one. What happened recently was that in this last legislative period, there was House Bill 6113 and Senate Bill 320 that was proposed, it failed, but it was to remove the preemption, to allow municipalities to, you know, if they want to regulate this, they can. And anyway, it failed. But I was waiting to see what happened with that because this is something that I've been wanting to bring to the council. I didn't feel in past years that the council might be very receptive to this, and then we had the pandemic. So, I think now the timing is right for us to consider this. I want to make it clear that what I'm proposing is not an ordinance, it's a resolution. It's not, you know, an ordinance prohibiting things, it's a resolution of intent or encouragement. Is that a word? I've spoken with Heidi about this. But, plastic bags, I know some communities have prohibited the use of plastic bags. To me, anything that has more than one use should not be prohibited. Plastic bags, most of us use, I use them to line my trash cans in my, you know, small trash cans. People use them to pick up their doggy litter, to clean up their kitty litter, use them to throw away diapers, we use them to return things to the grocery, you know, to the store or to go on a picnic. So, plastic bags have a lot of uses, they're not single-use. Yes, there are some people that might use them as single-use, but even that recycling is relatively easy. Almost every large store, Lowe's, Publix, I'm guessing MyLims just too, you know, has a place where you can bring in your bunch of plastic bags and stick them in there right before you go into the store. So, if we were to, and I know some communities have prohibited the use of plastic bags, in essence, what we'd be doing is buying plastic bags in the store for kitty litter, for, to line your trash can liners, to, you know, to pick up your doggy poop when you walk and stuff, which serves no purpose, we're actually manufacturing more plastic. My personal thought on plastic bags is if you don't want them, bring your own bag to the store. Take it with you, bring your own reusable bag to the store, and don't use plastic bags. Straws, straws, I know some communities have wanted to regulate straws, and actually, you could prohibit straws because straws didn't fall under this 2016 regulation. Somehow, it was excluded. But straws, again, there are a lot of people who want to use straws because they don't want to put their lips to the glass in the restaurant. I have some friends who have problems holding things and they don't want to in a restaurant, you know, embarrass themselves by trying to lift the cup, they use a straw. So, straws, again, if you don't want to use straws, you just tell your server, you know, no straws. And that's something that we have total control of it. It's a two-way street. We have to be the ones to say, no straws, no plastic bags, I bring my own. You know, it's not something to prohibit something, you know, depending, waiting for a law to appear, all it takes is us consciously deciding that we're not going to use it. And by giving that feedback back to the businesses, it's also letting them know that, you know, that we'd like alternatives that that we're environmentally conscious, aware of the issues. What I do want to, and one other thing is utensils, plastic utensils and condiments. A lot of times when you get takeout, you know, the business just throws in a whole bunch of condiments and plastic utensils, and then you're taking it home and you have all these, you know, so that, there again. But also, if I'm ordering and I'm at work and they're bringing something and I don't have utensils, I want to make sure there's utensils there. So, businesses are kind of hesitant not to put it in because, you know, you might get very upset that you got your meal and there's nothing for you to eat it with. So, there again, it's incumbent upon us to be the ones to say, no plastic, you know, don't put any utensils in it, I don't need any condiments, you know, you get all these soy sauce and ketchup and all these things that wind up throwing away. And again, it's our responsibility as the customers to let the businesses know. But what I'd like to ask is our businesses to ask, do you need straws? Do you need utensils when there's takeout? Do you, do you need a bag? A lot of times when I go to a store, if I'm just getting a few items, I carry it myself. If I didn't bring my bag with me, you know, you can manage it yourself, you don't need a plastic bag. And I think what I'd like to do is an awareness campaign, similar to what we've done with feeding the wildlife of making our community more, take more active role. I find from so many residents demanding or requesting that we prohibit these things, that we put in laws prohibiting these things, and there's really no reason to do that. And the last thing I want is for our poor code enforcement officers to be sent because, you know, somebody is using a straw somewhere and they're, you know, going in, you know. Honestly, we have very limited resources and they have a lot of other issues that they need to address. But where I think we can try to to do something is with polystyrene. Polystyrene is styrofoam. And styrofoam itself serves no, it serves a great purpose for what it's intended to do. It keeps your food hot, it keeps it contained, you know, it stores it, it's very inexpensive. You get it home and your food's all in one piece. So, what its purpose, it serves a very good purpose for that, for what its intent was. The problem is getting rid of it after you no longer need it, you can't, it's not really, it's definitely a single-use. Although, I guess you could try to reuse it, but for most of us, it's single-use. Because of its shape, because it retains its shape so well, it causes a lot of trash, a lot of bulk in landfills, you know, it's massive. It's not something that folds up easily. It takes up a lot of bulk, so there's an extra cost and extra landfill space needed for it. And we all know it never dissolves, it'll be with us forever and ever and ever. So, again, with polystyrene, and I'm not saying that we put in an ordinance prohibiting it, what I'd like to do is, in our resolution, is to really encourage our businesses to look for alternatives, and the alternatives are cardboard. I know some people say, well, a pizza box, you're not supposed to recycle because it's got the grease and all. You can recycle half of it, you tear off the top, you recycle the top, you can't recycle the bottom if it's got the grease and cheese. But the same thing with cardboard takeout containers, you know, if they're too messy with the food, you can still recycle the top or the clear plastic ones. So, to encourage our businesses and our customers to look for those alternatives. The other thing is, if we're going to someplace where we know we get takeout, I go on weekends a lot with one of my neighbors, we walk to breakfast here on Westwood Drive, and we always wind up having takeout. And, you know, if it's something like that, that you feel comfortable, take your own little takeout containers, you know, take a little plastic container and put it in instead of coming home with the styrofoam in the plastic bag. I know that doesn't always work, you know, if I'm going to go to dinner at Fleming's Steakhouse or Morton's, I'm not going to get a lot of, you know, friends wanting to come with us if, you know, every time I'm taking my takeout containers. So, obviously, there's some discretion that you have to use there. First of all, my husband will not sit with me. I'm bringing my own takeout containers to stuff. But it is possible, you know, if you know ahead, especially something local where they know you and you're going to take your own. So, where I think we could also make a dent is with activities in the city. And I don't want to, right off the bat, right now, address our contracts with, say, our senior center where a lot of the home meals or, you know, the styrofoam is used. But those are very difficult, fragile contracts right now, so perhaps something in the future with that. But where we rent out spaces, if we rent out a room, say, the party room at the aquatic center, that we can put a stipulation in the contract saying polystyrene products, styrofoam, is not allowed. And if it's used, we can take a certain amount out of the deposit. And that's it, you know, and if, it's not like we're going to send the police in to investigate, but if we find out that they've used it, you know, the trash cans have that in there, and then we take a certain amount out of the deposit. But the main part is letting them know ahead of time when they sign the rental park activities where, and again, I don't want to, someone that is sitting at, you know, in their own little chair, watching their kids play soccer and having a styrofoam cup of coffee from Bella Bakery, you know, to send code enforcement there. It's, this is more on a personal and community, what would I say, encouraging each other basis. But if we are, if you are renting out the facility in, say, a playground, or I don't know if we rent out, let's build it, we rent it out sometimes, those kinds of things. There's a rental that is part of the contract that, because that does generate a lot of waste. And usually, if you're buying stuff for the party, you know, if you know that ahead of time, you can avoid that. Let me just see if I have, oh, the other thing is with some of our communities, and I've already, I know Starbucks does this, you can bring in if you know, and this kind of works best in our community, you know, where, that's why I think we can make this work. It works best, these ideas, where you're familiar with, you know, where you're going, it's someplace that you frequent. Starbucks has a program where if you bring in your own cup of coffee, they fill it for you, as long as it's a clean cup, they'll, you know, fill it so you don't take away. And you know you're going to Starbucks, and most of us would probably rather use our own cup. I spoke with the other bakery here, Bella Bakery, that I love to go for, you know, the Cafe Coniches. And I think they will do that. I spoke to the husband and not the wife, and so, I'm not sure. But, you know, that you bring in, you know you're going to have a styrofoam cup, you bring in your own cup and ask them to fill it for you instead of your own reusable cup. So, these kinds of things of just an initiative among our residents and our community that that we're really trying to voluntarily make a dent on the use of disposable plastic, and in particular, the styrofoam. I think we can do this, I think it's something that our community would be receptive to. And that's why I'd like to do with the permission of the council and work with it later with, oh, the ecology club, of having our ecology club do an awareness program, and they come up with suggestions on ways within the city that we can reduce our use of plastics and also awareness for our residents to take these things into consideration. Let me just look through my notes and see if I'm missing. Okay, so that's pretty much it. It's nothing that we would do particularly ourselves here. I'll work with, if the council is in agreement with this, then I'll ask, we would ask our city attorney and city manager to prepare a resolution of intent, I guess, encouragement or support and encouragement of these initiatives and that making our community more environmentally responsible.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I guess this is a question for council, what, if we were to engage in awareness campaign about non-biodegradable pollutants such as this, and what is the benefit of doing this as a resolution beyond that?
Great, great question. So, the reason that I think the approach is a resolution as opposed to an ordinance has a lot to do with state preemptions. So, as Mayor mentioned, there are other cities that have tried to prohibit the use of plastic bags, for example, but that has resulted in very extensive litigation that ultimately resulted in the preemption being upheld.
Can I clarify my question? Not necessarily comparing an ordinance for, you know, versus a resolution. What is the benefit above and beyond just doing an awareness campaign to doing it as a resolution? Like, what do we get above and beyond?
I think it's twofold. I think the mayor's intent is to do a resolution expressing the council's expression that we, we as a council are encouraging our community, our stakeholders, to participate and take part in this, certain types of behavior on a voluntary basis. I think it's a, it's an approach that's, it's certainly much less concerning than doing a, an outright prohibition.
Sure.
So, I, so you have that, the awareness campaign would be separate, sort of following that resolution and implementing it, saying the council is supportive of X, Y, and Z initiatives, and here's what we're trying to do.
And I think one of the things with the resolution is the intent that, as we look at contracts where possible, we put these stipulations in, like rentals within the city, that we put these stipulations in, whereas it may not be something we can do right away with the senior center or with other larger, but the intent is there that as we move down the road, a year or two from now, that we're getting more and more efficient at finding areas where we can reduce our use of, make a dent in our use of plastics.
So, to the, I mean, we can include all sorts of things in a resolution. And remember, a resolution is, it's an expression of your intent that's temporary, whereas an ordinance is your law. There are several cities, and I've There are several cities, and I've drafted this for many of them, where they have done a prohibition on polystyrene, for example. And what they've done is, even though there is a state preemption, what they've done is prohibited it in the city. City spaces, for example, your parks, which is what the mayor was talking about. I don't know that the mayor is suggesting implementing or calling for an ordinance at this time. But I think it wouldn't be incongruous with what she's suggesting. You would have an ordinance potentially that would prohibit the use of polystyrene in your parks. And that way, you would enforce it by retaining a security deposit, for example, if someone does violate that.
For rentals, for rentals, not just walking into a park with a polystyrene.
Correct, correct. Although I would need to check the law, but I think, I mean, there, there's all sorts of things that you can do within that preemption. So, so you could go in those directions. I think the mayor's sort of trying to make this a voluntary, community effort, which may certainly be more well-accepted by the community than having a
Also as, as something that perhaps other communities can use too. If we have a resolution, I can see it as something that we can pass on through the League of Cities. And suggest that other communities do something similar. Which is really make a dent in our use of, of the use of plastic where it can be. And again, I want to stipulate, I am not trying to prohibit the use of anything with the exception of perhaps. And, and that would be something that we'll look at as far as, you know, with the contract with the rentals of, you know, one of our facilities. Of a rental where there is a little more control over that, that somebody's coming in and renting the place. And just like we would say, no alcohol, you know, no polystyrene.
And I can share with you, I shared with the mayor, I can share with those of you who may be interested, copies of ordinances that other cities have adopted. They're about a paragraph long, they are not complicated. And it just says, you know, if you're renting our park shelter for your kid's fifth birthday party, I'm paraphrasing. You can't use polystyrene. And it's, it's fine, other cities have it, it's not a, it does not tend to be an issue.
Through the chair, I just like to let you know, I applaud your effort here. And I'm 100% behind you in this effort environmentally for certain. Many of us have seen various shows, various exhibitions of what happens globally with the end use of these plastic products. It's tearing the oceans up for starters. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and dissertate on this, but we all know it's wrong. And we all know that it's so convenient that it can be nothing but wrong, because it's going to end up in wrong places. My friend Dan Gelber on Miami Beach has made several initiatives on the beach, within the city of Miami Beach. To do away with straws and go to paper straws, I know that for a fact. Certain other municipalities, as the attorney just brought out, also have made initiatives toward this. There are statutes that preclude it being done, and I think that's wise of you to bring a resolution rather than try to push something here. But I think it's for right reasons. The one problem is the alternatives, and I think you spoke to several of those in what you said earlier in your opening. Which seems to be the biggest problem, the alternatives, what is the alternatives? I've spoken to several businesses in Miami Springs about this. And a lot of them will fight this because they say it's cheaper to use plastic than it is to use alternatives. But maybe we're not there yet in terms of exploring all of the alternatives, you, you mentioned a couple in what you said here this evening. So it's, it, I think it's a step in the right direction, I think it's well, it's well meant to go forward. And you've got my support on it, I'll tell you that right now, it's the right thing to do.
And, and I think to your point of, you know, when businesses, if, if a business feels that they can't do it. They have the right to use polystyrene, it's legal, we're not going there. It's all we're doing is, you know, just getting the message out that our community, that Miami Springs is trying to take measures to encourage with our businesses, with our residents, with our visitors. With our city, activities within our city that, that are more environmentally responsible. And really putting a dent in our use of plastics in particular, Lee, and that's why I bring up is the styrofoam. Because the other ones, you know, you have a choice of saying yes or no, I don't know how you, you know, say no to, if you order takeout from, you know, one of our businesses. You know, it, they're going to put it in something that you, you have no choice of, you know, of saying, well, you know, unless you, like I said, you bring your own containers, which we'll see, you know, that might work, that might not, some businesses may not want to fill.
Well, you know.
Leftovers with their containers.
Well, Mayor, you know, one, one, one place we could start right here is eliminating styrofoam cups at our coffee bar, right here at City Hall.
Just thinking, if Suzie was still here, that she could request to get the other paper. And, and some of the coffee, disposable coffee cups are lined with plastic and they're not too much better than the other. And that's why I'm saying where possible, you take your own, you know, where possible, you bring your own water. You know, just, I, the, the thought behind this. And hopefully, a year or two from now, we'll be in a better position. You know, as far as I am picked, I don't know how we would measure it, it's just something that, you know, I think intuitively all of us will know. When we see that, but the, one of the big components of this is making sure that our residents and our businesses, it's a two-way street that they communicate and that they let each other know, these are options that you have to not cause so much waste. If you let us know, we won't package it this way for you, or we won't provide these things in there. And that residents, you know, say, I don't need this, I, you know, I, I'll carry it myself, I don't need the condiments. I will use my own container. Again, the cups at Starbucks and at the bakery, that's right off the bat, you know, a coffee cup. If you think about each of us get coffee takeout every single day, and how many people do that? And, you know, it's something that you know you're stopping on the way, and you can carry your own cup, just as Starbucks itself. Also, they give you a 10% discount, I found out, if you bring your own cup.
Really?
Yep.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I, I want to express my support for the general principles that you've raised here tonight. You've enlightened me in a couple of ways that I hadn't thought about. I'll start with the last one first. I got so many cups at home, you know, ceramic cups. I'm bringing one to the next meeting because I have coffee here, and I'm just going to leave it here, wash it, and you know, just, just, you know, I think that's it's conscientiousness is, is a funny thing, right? It's, it's, it's because it's about habits, right? And, 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 you know, as I used to tell my students, I used to give them a lecture about turn signals. Right? And I'd tell them a story about when I first dated my wife, driving through a mall. And, and putting my signal light every time I went to turn inside the parking lot. And so about the third time, she says to me, why are you doing that? I said, it's a habit, right? So I always use a turn signal light, and, and it's a habit, right? And I tell them it's a good habit, and even though there's no one there, and maybe there's not even a car coming. I automatically move to, you know, put the turn signal, it's my father taught me. So I think the idea of, of a, you know, kind of seventies popular term of raising consciousness, right? Just awareness of things is an important one. My daughter, Sophia, years ago, bought some metal straws for the house. That we use and wash and, you know, you know, our smoothies and all these things. And my wife always asks for a straw when we go out because she doesn't want to drink from the glass, the cup, particularly because especially of COVID, so it's, it's an awareness of how to, right? And we are regular customers of a couple of places in town that we go like once a week. And we do have some plastic containers that we didn't buy, but they came with food at some point. And we just wash them and it become part of the storage of our, we use them for leftovers and things. So I think it's, I think it's important that we express this in a resolution, that we bring awareness. As, as you pointed out with the, with the vice mayor and the other issues that we've talked about, and it's made me think about. You know, I, I use, I go to Mylum and I it's less easier to remember to bring something, to carry the stuff in than to just get paper and paper bags. And we do recycle them and they have multi-use, but it's all about consciousness, right? And to, and to ask, and like you said, in our city, it's a little easier to kind of convey that message. Because styrofoam, you know, it's the worst, and it's most places, that's what they give you. So I'm in support of this, I think it's a great idea that we begin that process. For, for William, I will have a cup here.
And I, and I think, you know, what we're saying too is that the city itself, that we will be the leaders in this. That we will, it's not just an awareness of, you know, oh, you should do this, that we will be the leaders in it. That we will look at our contracts when new contracts come up and look for opportunities to. It doesn't mean we have to, you know, if the cost is much significantly higher or the vendor's not poss, you know, and all, all it is, is, you know, kind of a directive that where possible with city purchases, city events. Whatever, we will look at opportunities to reduce the use and, and bring out this information to our residents, asking them to do, and their businesses to do the same.
Through the chair. Mary, thank you for bringing this up, it's a responsible topic, I mean, we could all do our parts, obviously. You know, for the better of, of our motherland. I have a question for Heidi, when you say that the resolution of intent is temporary. Is, is there like a deadline on that resolution, like how does that work? Because I would have loved to have done that for the ducks.
No, resolutions just by state law are expressions of a temporary nature.
Right.
Whereas ordinances are your law and they're permanent unless they're amended or repealed. So a resolution is, it's, it's sort of easier to adopt. As well as you can repeal a resolution as we've done at times. It's not something that you do frequently, and resolutions of, of support don't tend to have an expiration date on them. It's just, it's your, even though legally it's a temporary expression, it's not something that you couldn't change later on.
Okay. And then what does that mean to the public, so they could understand it? It's just showing that the council supports this idea of transpiring this action throughout the city for the better good.
The same way that sometimes the council will adopt a resolution supporting a certain state, state House bill or a state Senate bill. And saying that we as a council are supportive of that, and we're asking the legislator to adopt that bill and the governor to sign it. Similarly, this would be a resolution where you are expressing that as a count, as a council, you would like to encourage the use of alternatives to plastic, discourage the use of single-use plastics. And, you know, however we end up writing it, and it's simply encouraging the community to participate essentially. And then to the extent you want to give direction to the administration to implement it through a public awareness campaign. Then you can do that as well.
And looking at the contracts where possible.
Yeah, yes.
And to the restaurant businesses here in Miami Springs, it's, it would just be to aware them as well.
Ask them to please, and, and also asking our community, because again, like I say, it's really, it's a two-way street. It's got to be the customer saying, oh, you know, I don't need this, I don't need this. Or, you know, and, and eventually what happens in some communities is styrofoam is much less expensive than the other containers.
That's right.
But what happens in some communities is they realize that the customers are willing to accept the, you know, the extra cost burden. Because they keep asking for it, and you know that they're asking, oh, I would rather you have another container, and it happens. And, and the reality is, you know, styrofoam, even when you order it, it takes a lot of space to, you know, they, they, they don't stack well. So there's a cost involved even in storage and transportation, even though it doesn't weigh much, it takes up a lot of space. So it's more getting on the path. And, and I think it's something that our city, our, our city, right here in the center, when we're so concerned about flooding issues. And, you know, our canals and all these things, we can do this. This is not going to be a hardship on anyone, but I think it's an important initiative from our part.
Mayor, did, I, I may have missed it, but did you mention anything about the recognition that we talked about?
Oh, no, thank you, Heidi, yes, because we had talked about some of the things with the restaurants, Vice Mayor, is that we can encourage. And this is something that I know the Ecology Club had touched on before the pandemic, is recognizing restaurants who, you know, we give them a name of Miami Springs Green or something, and who are taking initiatives to not even, not bringing water to the table unless you're asked for it. You know, a lot of times you sit down and right away they bring you four glasses of water. Well, that's water that's being wasted, it's glasses that need to be washed, you know, so. And, and I know the, you know, the server may think, well, they'll get upset because I didn't bring water, but it's asking, would you like water? Or letting, you know, or, or if they don't bring you water, just asking and not getting upset about that, just knowing that if the water's not needed, it's wasting our precious natural resource. And also cost, you know, again, something that has to be washed, takes heat, detergent and everything. So with the restaurants, what we were thinking of is possibly the restaurants that have some initiatives in place, I mean, the Ecology Club could be involved with this. They get a seal or a recognition, or we feature them in our newsletter or our, our social media. As you know, an environmental partner for the city and, and talk about what they're doing.
Through the chair, one last thing. I'm, I'm in support of this, I'm just scared because, to give you an example, I'm a loyal customer of Cebiches. And my Lomo Salteado went from $15 to $18. So I, I like the recognition and the incentives of the restaurants. And then I, I just, I don't know where maybe most residents would start leaning towards a more green-friendly restaurant. And then not so much to the other because of the initiative. I just want to make sure that we're protecting them because we're in a tough time right now. I'm in agreeance with your.
That's why I don't want to regulate it at all, I want to leave it up to the restaurants and the customers. And, you know, I really believe that when there's that kind of communication. You know, things work out into what they're seeing, and, and I think a lot of businesses are more receptive to what they notice customers are looking for. And if customers really want the least expensive price, the business will know that, and they will keep using products that, you know, which is fine. I mean, they have to stay in business, they need the business, so that's why we're not regulating this. This is more trying to encourage at least the thought process of even considering, even though I can order the styrofoam. You know, for maybe, you know, 50 cents more per, and, and I know some of these containers are expensive, 50 cents more per order or even a dollar more per order, I can offer the other one. Some businesses may decide down the road to have both offers and say, which would you like? You know, there's an extra charge, a surcharge if you get this takeout container, the cardboard container, we have a surcharge of, you know, 75 cents. I don't know, and offer both. But again, well, this is totally, we wouldn't get involved in, you know, micromanaging any of that. It's totally trying to get that awareness, yes, consciousness. And that the city is the ones that are, we're being the leaders in trying to get this movement going. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I, I think that expressing our, our support for, for you know, using materials that are, that are biodegradable, right? I think is noteworthy, and, and I think that the resolution is only effective insofar as you couple it with, you know, a campaign of awareness and consciousness and educating people and encouraging people and recognizing people. But we have, you know, we talk about like where we want the caveats to be. And I think that trying to enforce violations for people that are, are renting our spaces for events. I think that's one for me, just, just for me, I think is one bus stop too far for me. So I, I think that, I, I would be in favor of encouraging people, educating people, recognizing people. And, and see, and see how that goes. I think that we've, we've done it with other issues and, and it's been successful, and I feel like that's the most palatable way to get people to get on board.
And I think with renting the spaces, we can just put it in the contract that these things are not. And I think with renting the spaces, we can just put it in the contract that these things are not allowed. Um, like I said, I really don't want to send our code enforcement officers, you know, chasing someone because they see somebody with styrofoam. So that's not the intent, but that they're not allowed or um, uh, you know, in if an event rentals and
Yeah, I mean, I'd.
Like that. Um, I mean, I think saying that we're going to take a deposit um, for if they are, do use it, um, doesn't necessarily mean we can do that because I don't think the cleanup staff is going to be looking in the garbage can and counting how many containers and stuff. So it may be more saying that we will take a portion of the deposit. If you do use uh, polystyrene when you rent, and again, I'm only talking about, I'm not saying, I hope this is getting across because I know some people are going to think that, you know, they can't ride their bike or, you know, or um, go into the park, you know, park with, if you're renting a uh, uh, city space, we're talking about that we put it in there that, you know, part of your deposit will be um, will be capped if if you use polystyrene, um, styrofoam, um, you know, that that might be incentive enough.
So I mean, I think that's the part that I I don't, because then I I feel like we're we're giving everybody the ability to to choose, we're not going to prohibit this, we're not going to make you choose a more expensive option unless you're renting from us, in which case we will. Um, and then and then I feel like, I don't know, I just feel it it feels very kind of nebulous. Just my opinion, I'm just saying that if if we say we, we're not really going to go to length, so are we doing it as a bluff? Are we just writing it in there? I think that we get more out of just educating people and encouraging people, uh, even right into the contract, like, hey, consider using
Right.
you know, products and uh, I just, the the part where I uh, and kind of get off the train is is the part about, you know, you have a security deposit and if we, you know, that that's where I I kind of start to cringe a little bit.
Do the chair. I think um, those points are really good, you know, about eliminating, you know, certain things. I think we can implement those in our contracts without even a resolution of intent with a campaign awareness. I, there's many venues that say you can't use certain materials on on site. So can't, is that something that we could do as part of the list of uh, materials?
So we need to look at our parks rules and how they've been adopted. Um, a lot of places that I work with have it as an ordinance, um, so that it's very clear that this is the law. But to the extent that the council does or doesn't, we can certainly add a, you know, that I've seen that, it's been a while since I've looked at that, those uh, event rental contracts, but you can add a pro, uh, not a provision, you can add a statement, you know.
Correct.
The city strongly encourages the use of, it's, you know, whatever it may be, or discourages the use of certain things. Um, and we can include it like that so that initially it can be part of a campaign. And if it be, if it is an issue that's pervasive, perhaps then you may need, find that there's a need to um, prohibit it unless you want to do it on the front end. But I think what the mayor's overall goal is is to make this a voluntary participation of the community that no one's forcing this on you. This is just, we want to be good stewards of the environment and so we're encouraging these types of behaviors.
And my intent with the contracts with the um, with the city rentals, and I don't think we have that many, but my intent is that we have to make the effort somewhere to show that, you know, that we're serious about this and hopefully down the road, like I said, I would like to, when we have a contract with the senior center. And again, providing those senior meals is the most important thing in the world. And if we can't, if we have to um, wind up having less meals because of the container, you know, we need to provide for the services of the senior center, the the services. So this would be um, secondary to making sure that we have the meals and the quality of the meals and the caterer and everything. Um, but making that stipulation in um, for our city, that wherever possible, we will look at the contracts and and like simple things like, you know, our cups, our coffee cups that we order, or if we order paper plates or um, you know, that they're not styrofoam. Um, starting there, I think is something reasonable. It it shows that that we really are serious in looking at this down the road too and trying to every year make a little bit of improvement where possible. And the other thing too is like, everything else, um, you know, in business, for the most part, there's that supply and demand that the less, the more people start demanding um, or the more people start asking for more recycle, I guess environmentally friendly for lack of term, um, products, the more the price comes down because more companies start making them. And so right now the cost is high, but you know, those kinds of things happen. So there may be a time where um, you know, styrofoam isn't used much anymore or produced much anymore just because the demand isn't there. It's graduated to these other more environmentally friendly and and you know, nothing's perfect. They all have. But something that we can use in our single stream, we have single stream recycling available at our homes. And um, this is just really, really important that it's readily available to us. You know, all I have to do is go outside my house and put in the recycling. So hopefully the containers that I bring home that I use should be able to go in there. And like I said, even the pizza box, if you tear off the top, it can go in there. So, you know, encouraging those kinds of things that then we can, because one of the biggest problems with recycling is that it doesn't matter if if my pen is recyclable, it doesn't matter that it's recyclable unless there's a readily available place for me to recycle it. And I can't put this in single stream in our city thing. And so it doesn't matter that it says recycling. If, you know, if the only way that I can recycle it is I have to mail it to, you know, Orlando, Florida and they have to collect it, realistically, it's not recyclable. And so the the fact that we have recycling in our community at every house available, um, encouraging the use of products that really are recyclable. Um, and and like I said, with the pay, plastic bags, those you take back to just about any store that you walk into um, has, uh, you know, major store, has um, recycling um, for plastic bags. So that's readily available too.
Yeah, I think that uh, and and the attorney just used the term a moment ago, I think is very important. Um, by nature of this resolution, it if 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 we decide that we're going to go with this, um, we are actually announcing that in fact, this, these particular materials that you're citing are in fact pervasive. We are saying that to people. True story?
We we can include something like that. Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think clearly they are. I mean, that's just my my opinion. I don't know about the other four of you, but I mean, uh, and and I think that's an important point to be made here. Because without without teeth, it's, you know, people just go, oh, yeah.
Anecdotally, you you all know that I I have a certain person in my life who is very well aware and keeps me abreast of food, uh, food cost increases and and things like that. And over the years, uh, I've learned a lot about the fact that um, even five years ago, there were not as many manufacturers of these alternatives to styrofoam. And it is now, um, because of initiatives like this and especially in Europe where it's far more pervasive, this type of uh, change in behavior. Um, there is a significant number of vendors who do have all of these alternatives and the price has come down. That being said, I will acknowledge to any member of the restaurant community that there is a much higher cost uh, in implementing these things, but.
True. Thank you.
So do we have, we need a vote for the resolution or just a consensus? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, council, very much for that.
Thanks for bringing it up, ma'am.
I think it's um, it's something that we can definitely do here in our community. Okay, so um, let's move to reports and recommendations from our city attorney.
Uh, the only uh, report I have is that uh, I think you all are aware at this point that apparently we did not receive any, the city did not receive any complaints about noise um, after the four-day event uh, that Factory Town conducted. Um, for those members who may be tuning in or unfamiliar, back in, at the end of last year, uh, Factory Town is an event venue in our neighboring city of Hialeah that was conducting an event. The noise from that event, it was a concert, uh, spilled out miles away. And the city uh, city's leadership, the city mayor and the council instructed our firm to file a lawsuit against Factory Town uh, to enjoin them from creating this nuisance. And so we filed that lawsuit, but we were able to avoid litigation and we were able to come to an amicable resolution. Um, so we, so we got Factory Town's attention by filing the lawsuit. Uh, but we were able to come to a solution because, you know, they they are a business. We don't ness-, we don't enjoy shutting down businesses and certainly those not within our own jurisdiction. But we certainly wanted to protect the members of the Miami Springs community and ensure that they could sleep at night. Uh, because we know that many members of the community were awake uh, during the last go-around. There were over, I think, three hundred complaints, William, if I'm misstating that, it was certainly well over a hundred complaints. And so uh, Factory Town, we got their attention. They engaged sound engineers. Um, they presented us with a plan about a month ago. And it looks like their sound mitigation plan
Worked.
was successful because there were no complaints this weekend and it sounds like everyone was able to sleep in peace. So we're, we're happy with that result. Uh, and we're glad that Factory Town was able to conduct their business, uh, but in a responsible way. So very happy. Anything else? Heidi? No, that's the only report I have this evening.
City manager?
No, she stole my thunder.
Okay, let's hear it again.
So okay, take a bow.
The biggest, the biggest news this weekend is no, no news. Right. So hopefully it stays that way. I think they've finally come up with a solution for it. So um, I think you have some events, right?
Yes, I just wanted to remind residents that we're uh, still open for reg- registration for homes to um, register for their annual uh, Easter egg drop. And it's ten dollars per child if you register at the uh, community center and it's open to Miami Springs and BG residents for um, those eggs to be dropped in their lawn uh, the morning of Easter. Um, also, the Parks and Rec Department uh, is also having an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April sixteenth at Prince Field, starting at ten AM. Risk fans are required. So um, if you could um, get those purchased well in advance, that would be great. Uh, we have the One Blood at the Community Center on the twenty-ninth from twelve PM to seven PM. And I just want to uh, remind everybody that we still want everybody, encourage everybody to um, sign up for the newsletter. And at uh, you have to text MIAMYSPRINGS in all caps to uh, the number two-two-eight-two-eight and you will get a copy of our newsletter every Friday. And then also we have the Sixth Annual uh, Community Health and Wellness Fair. It's free. It's Saturday, April ninth uh, from ten AM to two PM. That's at, across from City Hall. The Women's Club is uh, sponsoring that. And then uh, we will also have representative, um, a representative from the US Senator Marco Rubio's office here at City Hall on Wednesday, March thirtieth from ten AM uh, to eleven AM, eleven-thirty, rather. That's it.
Thank you, Tammy. Um, okay, city council, vice mayor?
All right. Heidi, welcome back. We missed you. I hope I didn't jive pose it too crazy. All right. So um, thank you for your efforts in uh, with the issue of Factory Town. I'm really happy that they were also able to conduct business um, in that fashion. Um, I, oh, no, Omar's not here. I wanted to um, I wanted to maybe for the next meeting, I want to bring Omar uh, to come and talk to us of maybe what other recreational areas the city really needs or is really looking for. And the reason I'm telling you is because I enjoyed a beautiful day yesterday. We went to Montez and Coconut Grove, then we walked down to to the park and I saw people, you know, volley-molly. I mean, had we, me and Frankie used to go down there often. After we got married, had kids, everything changed. Um, but we liked that little slushy lemonade stand over there. And there was just so many things happening in that open area. Uh, volleyball, soccer, a bunch of things. And we have a beautiful city and we have beautiful outdoor areas, but I can't think of a place other than actually going to the rec center and having to go with inside a building to play basketball or to play volleyball. So I wanted, I want more outdoor accessible areas to the public where families could just go and enjoy because our recreation center is always busy with tournaments and basketball things and, you know, they they reserve the spot. So you're kind of like working around a little bit of a a calendar, but more outdoorsy areas um, for recreation. So I wanted to get his input. What residents have maybe have told him, hey, I would like to see this and that. Um, so just a thought. Um, the resolution of intent, that is a great idea. Um, for the ducks. I'm kidding. I just think um, I, it's it's nice that we have this option to exercise, to show the the importance and um, how do you call it, the seriousness of it, of of what the intent is of of the city. I can tell you, um, I haven't gotten any more complaints as when we launched that duck um, feeding educational uh, campaign that we did, putting it online and, you know, exercising every social media app that we have, it has, it's tamed. And I can tell you, because driving down La Lum, you don't see the tiki huts full of um, bird poop anymore. So it's kind of refreshing. But I also residents didn't know that, you know, if they have or or if they're living in front of one of those tiki huts and it's, it's in bad conditions, they can always call, you know, um, Public Works and get that, you know, pressure cleaned and taken off. So that was kind of like a a double awareness of like what your city officials do for you and vice versa. Um, and now that we're coming into spring, we have the ducks and the ducklings and everything. I just want to throw it out there with Shannon again, to to throw it out there of no feeding the ducks and the ducklings because it's cute and everything. I'm just, I'm throwing the awareness now because of the season, just to refresh because the ducklings will just instantly die. Maybe not the parents because they have a bigger stomach, but um, I I I personally, walking down, I've seen just a dead duck and it wasn't just because it was, it wasn't ran over. It was just on the side, just, you know, close to the lake, but I I thought it was sleeping, but.
Too much bread.
I don't know. I I left it there, but then it was sad because then you see the other duck, they literally, they 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 sit with them and they don't know what's wrong with it. They just, I guess it's morning. It was kind of sad, but I just want to throw out there again, the, to refresh to, uh, maybe till the end of of spring. And um, that's it. I have nothing else to report. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, and Representative Avila, thank you for for being here. Thank you for being a role model. Um, you can tell that when somebody is so genuine and has such a good energy with his work ethic, it doesn't, y- you can know them for a couple of months and the impact is there. When somebody is doing the right thing and and they know what they're doing and you observe it, um, that was pretty, pretty refreshing to see because you don't, you don't see a lot of that talent every day and and people, they lose focus. And to have that that tunnel vision like that without, you know, being compromised and just doing what you were selected to do is very refreshing and it gives me confidence to do my job to the best of my abilities. Not that I'm going to be a politician, but I serve the public at this capacity. So um, it's always nice to have good role models because it kind of gives you that that drive to just keep going. Because sometimes I just wanted to say, you know what, I'm taking this hat off because it's a lot of work. I'm hours and hours at home. Frank's like, we're going to, you know, come to bed. And I'm working to literally one o'clock in the morning because I do have my other jobs, just typing up, you know, you guys see the the stuff that I've brought. It's not and i- it takes a toll, but I do it with with my heart and my drive and that's what's keeping me going. So um, I'm going to close with that. Oh, and and William, I think um, I think you had to do something with Factory Town because they said that my city manager looks like a very like um, ver-, what was it they they called me? Um, they're like, oh, did your city manager serve or something? I'm like, he did serve. He's like, no, the guy looks like a tough guy. I'm like, he is.
Don't mess with him.
Moose, he's a moose.
He's the, he's.
You're the elk. The elk.
The big moose.
And I go, my city manager is better and scarier than yours now because all right, I'm closing out.
Okay, Councilman Best?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, uh, being we brought Factory Town up a couple, three times tonight, I just wanted to check with with legal here. There was no counter suits because of the Miami City Rivers River Festival with, from Hialeah complaining about our sound? I I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I have nothing else, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Fajat?
Uh, yeah, uh, real quick, uh, William, I was going to ask Omar, but uh, I heard that the rec center is going to be closed for for some time, right? Uh, what are the, do you know the dates?
They're replacing the gym floor, remember?
Right.
Uh, we need to do that. So I think it's going to be closed a month of April.
The month of April.
Yeah.
And then when is the golf course renovation going to begin?
Uh, well, that we're going to bring back to you, but that's scheduled for next year.
For next year. Okay.
We'll, we'll probably start um, the next meeting or two. Um, we'll bring an item for you for the design. Um we'll bring an item for you for the design aspect of it, but uh we really work won't start until probably March or April of next year.
Okay, all right, so those are the important dates to know, especially for the rec center, because I know a lot of people uh use it. And then lastly, I want to thank uh staff, uh I got a lot of great feedback from from residents about the social media posts. About the traffic summons and citations and the summaries by by week, like that is great. Like if if that's something we could sustain, that would be, I don't know how much work it is to do, but that's great because it kind of. Uh doesn't feed the narrative of like, you know, well, the well, back in the day in the zone and all of that, I mean, I I. Uh I think I think it's great and it so well done.
Councilman Vasquez?
Um I have a couple of short things. First of all, um. Not that I want to talk about the war in Ukraine, but I want, I want to kind of remember, because I keep those folks in my prayers. You know, every time I watch a scene of bombings and bombing cities, I can, you know, I think about our city, you know. Bombing recreation centers, uh community centers that people are using to hide from the effects of the war, I mean, that's just, that's just criminal. Uh secondly, uh just to remind everyone that we have. Uh men and women of the United States Army Eighty Second Airborne Division. Out there, now they're not necessarily directly in harm's way right now, and we hope they're not, but we also have. Men and women serving in the Navy and the Air Force and other places that are in proximity. Uh to um the theater, the war theater out there, so. Um and also, um the Lions Club led the way about a month ago in having a uh. They raised uh all kinds of things for folks to support them, uh refugees that are flowing into Poland. Um you know, if you hear about that or anything like that, just another way to support those folks, like like a city of refugees that we are. And a town of refugees um to do what we can in that regard. I I just want to echo that I was pleased not to hear anything from Factory Town. And uh and 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 thank you uh Heidi and 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 William for your, you know, your real, your leadership in this. I think that folks got the message that we weren't really being a pain in the butt. We were advocating for the peace of our community. And and by extension, as Mr. Dominguez pointed out, the peace of their community as well. Um as the uh first indigenous president of Mexico said, Benito Juarez. Respecting others' rights brings peace. And so to some people, a few people in Hialeah, it sounded like we were imposing on them. And the idea was, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to get people to be able to sleep and I appreciate uh Councilman Best asking the question. We didn't get any complaints uh from the uh from the city, uh city of Hialeah regarding our festival. Um third, I did not hear mention, although. William gave us an update and and as we walked out of here um at the last meeting. After you discussed your U T D and all the other issues, uh there was a newspaper woman outside from Channel fifty one. And I was trying to avoid her, but I said, okay, she wanted to talk to me and there weren't that many of us out there in Spanish. But actually, what she wanted to talk about was not that issue, was about the Airbnb.
Right.
And so I shared what I had, I shared what William had said and I said, this is from our city manager. Um and I explained as briefly as I could, I never saw the the television, uh you know, the where we're shown, but my daughter's. Uh friend did, um and 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 I'm really concerned that the William let us know that there are. Twenty-five Airbnbs or illegal Airbnbs, I mean, this is something that's really concerned, right? Uh and and so I I'm pleased that you guys were on top of that and that we we need to really, you know, nip this in the bud. Because as far as the last meeting, uh there were only, I think it was four Airbnbs that are legit.
Only.
Only, but there are like more than twenty that are have been discovered, uh sort of like uh those old bootlegging. In basement places, um. One thing I want to mention, this is real quick, because I'm going to come back with this later on at a at a later date and talk to, I talked to William about it, I'm going to talk to. Our city uh uh attorney about it, is that the number of residents who own golf carts. Have approached me about bringing this issue forward about recertifying golf carts within the city limits.
Already been through that.
And we have done that before, um and I've read some of the material, but. Um I wanted to see if there was a way for us to kind of revisit that and that's all I'm going to say about that right now. But basically, it has to do, it doesn't, it 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 really means changing the certification of a of a of a golf cart. As as it is, a golf cart is like any other motorized vehicle in the city, has to have a tag from the state. And there are other cities that have changed some of those regulations and I believe we had conversations here back in twenty fifteen. But there was some issues about some signage and other things, so anyway, just in, I'm just putting a bug in your ear. And I may be coming back with this uh conversation, um and um. Last one, last one. No, 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 I I, no, you're you're right, and and this is because I I I used to do this as a professor, I always told my students how many things I was going to talk about. So I actually had five.
I'm going to be late for my next class, come on, man.
This is the last one, and actually, it's uh it's really to thank to thank uh Judge Darrow for visiting us.
Oh, yes.
Because I think it's important and I appreciate that.
But you stay for the whole meeting.
Councilman, Councilman Fajet, and I appreciate you stayed in Councilman Fajet invited you, but I think it's important, as you know. Uh as as a sitting judge, who is in in this case in civil court, you're 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 presiding over. Um um cases that have to do with folks from a lot of different communities and I can only think that it's so instructive to you. To be able to feel for other communities and the folks that come through and so I'm glad you stayed tonight, because I think you got an earful. Of the range of things in our small city, right, uh so uh. Thank you for that, uh your honor, and I'm I'm glad you were here, uh with that, I I passed the balance of my time to the mayor.
Your your honor, don't use it as a precedent, though.
Um I just wanted to to also um thank uh Judge Darrow for being here, um what a pleasure to get to know you. And um and there must be some award we should find for people who stayed till the end, visitors who stayed till the end of the meeting, right? Because, but thank you so much, um just in the by the fact that that you are so interested in getting to know our community. And I know there's so many communities out there that you serve, um just says a lot about um your integrity and your um desire to serve. So um thank you, um we're blessed to to have you as a judge. Um I wanted to also thank, of course, Representative Avila and Senator Diaz, um again for um. Their work on our behalf for this legislative session, it's um. Uh the first time in ever that we've we've gotten this much funding for our really important projects and these are all really important projects, so. Um just keep our fingers crossed that the governor doesn't veto any of them, but um the work that they're done, they've done on our behalf is um phenomenal. And um also, it was wonderful to um see Representative Rizzo and have him here and know that um he will. Likely, hopefully, be our representative in the future. Um Factory Town, I just wanted to mention that what everyone said, but it was such a big issue, I spent this entire weekend, I woke up in the middle of the night. I don't know how many times, no, looking at my phone, because last time my phone was just the emails and the texts and all, you know, and at three o'clock in the morning. No, no calls, no texts, you know, um uh our legal team did an amazing job of addressing this issue quickly. As soon as it happened, um that first weekend, um you you guys went to work for us and um and you found a resolution that works. They can have their event and we can have our community and you know, we can all peacefully uh live in harmony. Um it also showed by by the legal requirements that you did of making them uh do noise attenuation engineering. An engineering firm to do noise attenuation, that it can be done, that events can be held nearby. And you know, uh proper noise attenuation measures can be used and um the reciting, the near adjacent communities don't have to uh be subjected to it. So that was wonderful. Sorry, I have to put on my glasses, I wrote a note, I can't read it. I guess that's all, all right, everyone have a wonderful uh.
That's that's seven o'clock, right? We saw that, it's seven, Walt, right? Judge, thank you again, appreciate it.
My card. With myself, okay, bye.